It's that time. We could go out of order right off. We could do. The rework is just in as. Yeah, so it's after the pledge of allegiance, but we could take that out of order, right?
Yeah.
If we want, we could do, if we do local pledge of allegiance, we'll bump the rework after.
Good evening, Director, Staff, Commissioners, and General Public. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:35. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chairperson Morales.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Medina.
Present.
Chairperson, Planning Commissioner Cuevas.
Present.
And please note that Commissioner Lamelli is not with us tonight.
Next item on our agenda, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on our agenda, are there any corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is one correction. We would like to take the Planning Commission reorganization out of order to allow Commissioner Lamelli, who we believe will be here late tonight, to participate in that. So, we would just like to take that out of order and, and take that after the presentation on the Brown Act, if that's okay with the Commission.
Thank you. And next item on our agenda, public comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, so at this time, the public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. As a reminder, please show courtesy to others and direct all comments to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, staff communications. Are there any?
So, we do not have any staff communications tonight.
Perfect, thank you. Next item are the minutes. Can we get an approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on January 7th, 2025?
I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes held on January 7th, 2025.
I second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Chairperson Morales.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Medina.
Aye.
Chairperson Cuevas.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would like to let the record reflect that Commissioner Lamelli hasn't joined the Commission. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, next item on our agenda, we have a presentation.
Thank you, this is a presentation regarding the Brown Act and potential conflicts of interest from Alvarez, Glassman, and Colvin, who is the City Attorney for the City of Montebello. And it's important to note that the Brown Act is really about building public trust and transparency with regards to the administration of the city and all the transactions that go on there. So, this will kind of focus on a high-level overview of the requirements of the Brown Act, as well as some best practices and things that you should consider when you are acting as a part of this Commission. So, the topics will include the Brown Act and agendas and Commission meetings, some due process issues and fairness issues, roles of the Commission, Commissioners, conduct of meeting issues, and conflict of interest concerns. So, like I mentioned, we'll do an overview of the Brown Act, who's covered, meetings, agendas, closed session, enforcement, good governance. We'll touch briefly on Roberts' Rules of Orders and how they relate to the Brown Act and the conduct of meetings. Now, the first question that comes up is who is actually covered by the Brown Act? And it's any legislative body of the city that's required to comply with the Brown Act. This includes the City Council, all advisory or decision-making bodies or boards created by formal action. For example, this Planning Commission, any advisory committees, task force, volunteer groups. This also includes people who have been elected as a member of the legislative body, but who've not yet assumed the duties of office. So, essentially, the council member-elect. So, they have to be conscious of their actions and the communications with other Commissioners, even though they haven't taken office yet. And it's important to know that some city-funded or privately-controlled, or city-controlled private corporations or entities, including nonprofit corporations created by the city, are subject to the Brown Act. So, they do have to have agenda requirements, noticing requirements, and to comply with all provisions of the Brown Act. This also includes standing committees of a legislative body, such as a finance committee, personnel committee, which are regularly scheduled or have continuing subject matter jurisdiction, even if less than a majority of the legislative body participates. Onto the next sort of related question is what actually constitutes a meeting? A meeting is defined by the Brown Act as any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, and deliberate upon any item that is within its subject matter jurisdiction. This includes the use of direct communications, or through intermediaries, or through technological devices such as text messages or emails. There doesn't actually need to be action taken by these members in order for it to be defined as a meeting. And even if the body or the members are merely receiving information, like attending a conference, if a majority of members are present, it is considered a meeting that's covered by the Brown Act as well. And like I mentioned, a meeting covers not only a body's deliberations, including consideration, analysis, or debate of an issue, or any vote which ultimately may be taken. Next, we'll kind of go into what constitutes an improper meeting. As a caution, a majority of the members of a legislative body shall not use a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. This usually comes up in the context of serial meetings. Serial meetings are a series of communications, each of which involves less than a quorum of a legislative body, but which taken as a whole involves a majority of the body's members. The body is not allowed to develop a collective concurrence among a majority outside of a meeting. So, this typically takes place with two different types. There's the spoken hub, where someone is acting as the central communicator and communicating individually with each member of the body. Or it can be sort of a daisy chain, which is similar to a phone tree, where one person contacts one person, and then they contact the next person, and they in turn contact the next person. So, both of those situations can constitute a serial meeting. And it's important to note that it's not just physical interactions. The use of email, text messages, or other technology by a majority of the legislative body to discuss, deliberate, or take action on items within the body's jurisdiction violates the Brown Act. Keep in mind that these communications are also likely discoverable under the Public Records Act. So, bottom line here is, you know, be very, very cautious about the emails that you send, about the text messages that you send, simply knowing that they could, you know, be used to constitute a Brown Act violation, or they may be discoverable later on. I think Director Palombe is really good about when he does send out an email to everyone. He BCCs everyone, so that when you do reply, you're not copying every member of the body. Generally, as a best practice, it would be good just to not, not reply to these things. They are sort of informational for your benefit, and just to keep deliberations within the public purview. Yeah, so like I mentioned, recommendations for email, avoiding sending emails to the, the whole body, and try to keep it informational only. Don't ask for people's opinions, or try to solicit responses from other people to sort of take their temperature and deliberations that really should be done in public. Be careful replying to your emails, like we mentioned. It's important that you don't necessarily communicate your position or commitment regarding these matters before you've had that chance to deliberate in public. Again, don't reply to a majority of the legislative body, as we mentioned previously. And think carefully before sending any email. Remember that your email in turn can be forwarded to someone else, creating that sort of daisy chain serial meeting. So, it's important to keep that in mind as well. We're going to touch briefly on remote participation rules, because they are somewhat changing recently. Existing law allows members of Brown Act bodies to participate remotely in two situations. One would be for just cause, and this is defined as the need to provide childcare or close family relation, having a contagious illness, or needs related to a physical or mental disability, or being on official travel for the agency. Or it also falls under emergency circumstances, which includes physical or family emergencies that prevent a member from attending. This law was recently, a new portion of this law was recently adopted as of January 1st of this year, which limits the number of remote appearances that the Brown Act bodies are following. I think this is generally a response to the COVID pandemic being over and limiting the amount of remote appearances. So, basically, it's two times per year if the, if the body meets less than once a month, five times per year if it meets twice a month, seven times per year if it meets three times or more. The, the way that this sort of layers on top of the existing law is that you still have to provide just cause or emergency situation for a remote appearance. And on top of that, now you're only limited to basically two times per year, or five times if it meets, if it meets twice per month. Next, we'll go into public participation rights. The Brown Act requires that all meetings must be open and public, and all persons must be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body, except when a specific exception applies. The agenda for these regular meetings must provide an opportunity for the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of public interest before, during, or the legislative body's consideration of the item that's within the subject matter of the legislative body. No legislative body is allowed to take any action, whether by, by secret ballot, whether it's just a preliminary vote to see where people are, or whether it's the final vote taking action. And as we do here, reasonable time limits may be imposed on both the total amount of time for public participation on particular items and the time permitted to each individual speaker. Okay, next up, we have a brief overview of agendas. Typically, agendas are required to be posted 72 hours before regular meetings or 24 hours before special meetings. They include a brief general description of 20 words roughly, or less, of every item to be discussed, including in a closed session. The agenda must be posted in a location freely accessible to the public, and the agenda must now be posted on the local agency's website. Or, and I believe this case has come up, when an individual asks to be added to the list, they have to be either sent via snail mail, or if they agree, then we can send them an email with the agenda as well. And there really is no discussion or action on any other matters that haven't been properly agendized, within certain exceptions. We'll go ahead and cover those exceptions right here. Generally, as I mentioned, it's prohibited to have any action or discussion on an item not appearing on the agenda. However, the legislative body may briefly respond to public statements or questions. But again, this is, you know, within your option. It's not a requirement, there's no obligation to respond to anyone providing public comments. You can ask questions regarding clarifications, you can make a brief announcement. As we do with Commissioner Orals, you can make a brief report on your activities. You can ask, provide a reference to staff or other sources for factual information. And you can also request that staff place a matter on future agendas and report back to the legislative body on a subsequent meeting. Next up, we have closed sessions. Closed sessions are an exception to the rule that agency meetings must be open in public. And only specific topics authorized under Brown Act may be discussed in each closed session. Most commonly, these are existing or potential litigation, real estate negotiations, personnel matters, and labor negotiations. Really, these sessions are sort of designed to protect attorney-client privilege, as well as trying to protect the city, should it ever be, like if the disclosure of the information would compromise, say, a real estate negotiation, or a labor negotiation, or other matters that are generally kept confidential, like personnel matters. The disclosure of confidential information is prohibited unless the legislative body authorizes the disclosure of information. And confidential information means communication made in closed session that is specifically related to the basis of the closed session meeting. In other words, everything that you hear in closed session is probably going to be attorney-client privileged. So, be very, very cautious about talking about anything that you had, that had been discussed in closed session. And there are certain penalties there if you do violate those. And it's important to keep that in mind. Basically, what stays behind those closed doors, stays behind those closed doors. Next up, now we're going to do a brief overview of Roberts' Rules and the Brown Act. Now, you know, you all are aware of Roberts' Rules and how they procedurally help manage the meetings and have everything flow efficiently. And the Brown Act is really about the public interest and transparency. So, we're going to talk a little bit about how these two interplay with each other. First, the Brown Act is statutory, and Roberts' Rules are discretionary, meaning the Brown Act is black letter law. Whereas Roberts' Rules are kind of something that the city will adopt. So, Roberts' Rules can be flexible. They can, you know, the Commissioner can adjust it, or the Chair can adjust it as needed. But the Brown Act rules are solidified, and these are things that we have to, have to comply with. As I mentioned, the Brown Act compliance is required, where Roberts' Rules compliance is left up to the Chair or the Mayor, and is subject to the implementation of the legislative body. And along with that, for violations of the Brown Act, it does carry penalties. Whereas violating Roberts' Rules wouldn't necessarily result in overturning any action or decision made by this body. The Brown Act also defines and limits certain legal requirements of a meeting, whereas Roberts' Rules provide more guidance on the procedural aspects of the meeting. So, again, it's, one is the, the law, and the other is kind of the procedures that help, help move things along. Next, it's important to note that certain matters that the Planning Commission handles are somewhat legal or adjudicatory or quasi-judicial in nature. We, as a body, have encountered that within the last several months. And, you know, it's important to sort of maintain that idea that, you know, this is, this is a topic that has some legal ramifications of it. So, you know, adhering to the procedures and, and the rules that apply are of a particular importance. And these type of hearings must be conducted, conducted similar to a court trial. First, the applicant would come up and present. Then, we'd have generally people who are in support of the applicant come up and speak, and then as opposed to the application, and finally, the applicant would be allowed a rebuttal. It's recommended that Commissioners should avoid expressing a position until everyone's had a chance to speak and the Commission deliberates in front of the public. You can ask questions, but I would defer as to how you were voting, or kind of giving that away until all the testimony has been provided. People don't want to assume that you've already made up your mind before they've had a chance to speak. And I think that, that goes to kind of the, the public, and they're concerned that they're, they're being hurt. Next up, we have the Political Reform Act, and I promise it's not going to be too much longer. So, everyone just stick with me. The Political Reform Act, conflicts of interest. Next up. This is kind of an overview of, of what we're going to discuss with regards to the Political Reform Act. Keep in mind that the objective of this presentation is to identify issues and generally talk about common things that continually come up. If you do have specific questions, perhaps you can approach us directly. That would be covered under attorney-client privilege. Whereas, you know, if you ask me a question right here in front of everyone, then that would become a matter of public record. So, if you do have any questions about specific issues with regards to conflicts of interest, feel free to reach out to our office. It's important to, if you do have a potential conflict, or you do have a question, bring it up early. The last place that you do want to bring it up is the actual council or Commission meeting, that we don't have a chance to address it ahead of time, or perhaps have the opportunity to recuse before the meeting gets started. And this comes from my boss, don't play a lawyer, you pay us for a reason. And exercise caution when evaluating or addressing conflict issues or a political reform act matters. And it's important to note that the City Attorney cannot provide you immunity for a wrong decision. So, even if we tell you it's a gray area, but you can proceed, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're off the hook. If there are conflicts, you know, give us time, and we'll work through it and figure out what's the most appropriate course of action. And Arnold, my boss loves to say this, when you're considering any potential conflicts, always err on the side of caution. In other words, when in doubt, opt out. So, what do you do if you, if you do have a conflict of interest? Well, the general rule is that a public official may not make, participate in the making, or influence a governmental decision that will have a reasonably foreseeable material financial effect, and material financial effect on the official's or his or her immediate family's financial interests that is distinguishable from the effect on the public generally. Here, media family includes spouses and children. There's really sort of three parts to this rule. First is what is making or influencing a governmental decision. Second is what is a material financial effect? And really, does it apply to the public generally? Regarding making a decision, an official makes a decision when the official votes on a matter, appoints a person to a board or commission, commits the agency to a course of action, enters into a contractual agreement on behalf of the agency, or determines not to take any of the aforementioned actions. In other words, saying no also constitutes making a decision. An official influences a decision when the official contacts, appears before, or otherwise attempts to influence a fellow agency official regarding a decision before the official's agency with respect to matters before another agency, the official before it's to act on behalf or as a representative of the official's own agency. So, there's a lot of officials and agencies in that statement. Bottom line is, if you use your position to try to influence the decision of another agency or person working for that agency for your benefit, that is influencing that decision. So, just keep that in mind when you are speaking with other people and you do have, you know, personal financial interests, that you do have to be cautious about who you talk to and what you say. Next are some examples of typical economic interests which could disqualify you under the Political Reform Act. You know, keeping in mind, like, someone who pays you income, or are you someone you work for, or businesses that you own or have an interest in, property that you own, investments that you make, your employer, someone who, who gives you gifts, and including your family's finances. Just skip one. Okay, well, um, we'll cover this one first. So, with regards to real property, which I know is, is very common for everyone here, really, the threshold is in a direct interest of at least $2,000. This is California, all real property is basically over $2,000. And then comes the 500,000-feet distance rules. So, you can basically, basically break it up into three categories. One is if your property is less than 500 feet away, one if it's between 500 and 1,000, and one if it's over 1,000. one if it's between 500 and 1,000, and one if it's over 1,000. If it's under 500 feet away, presumption is that there's a conflict. Now, um, you can rebut this presumption um, by showing that there's clear and convincing evidence that the decision will not have a measurable impact on the value of your property. If your property is between 500 and 1,000 feet, then it's kind of like, okay, this has the potential to be a conflict. You're gonna have to show that it's actually not a conflict. Um, so they're gonna basically look at things like uh, your property's development potential, income-producing potential, highest and best use, um, character of the property by substantially or the action by substantially altering traffic levels, intensity of use, parking, view, privacy, noise levels or air quality or market value. Um, if any of those situations occur, then you're probably gonna be conflicted out. Um, lastly, if your property is over 1,000 feet away, the presumption is that there's no conflict of interest. However, um, if it can be shown that there will be a measurable financial impact on your property, then you would be conflicted out. So again, um, it's always good to kind of bring us in early and let us know what the situation is, and we can provide an analysis and kind of work through that. Uh, next, we have sources of income. Any sources of income, including commission income and incentive income, amounting to a total of at least $500 provided or promised to and received by the public official within the last 12 months before the decision is made. Um, I assume most of you uh, do have to do your disclosure statements as well, so you're, you're very aware of um, all the reporting that needs to go in here. And um, $500 uh, within the last 12 months is really the threshold. Uh, now, there's two exceptions to potentially, potentially financial conflicts. Uh, the first is something that we previously mentioned, uh, being the application of the action to the public generally, and the other would be legally required participation. Um, as it applies to the publicly, public generally, um, basically what they're saying is, you know, you should not be prohibited from participating just because it's a city, something that has a citywide effect and everyone's affected by it. You know, that's not necessarily the conflict because everyone's involved. So decisions that have a significant segment of the public and does not have a unique effect on the official's interest may be exempted. Um, generally, this means 25% of all businesses, all real property, or, or all individuals within the official's jurisdiction. However, with regards to real property, um, if it's at least 15% of residential real property within the official's jurisdiction, and only if the uh, uh, if the only interest the official has in the decision is the official's primary residence. Um, there are also specific rules for specific circumstances. Um, in particular, public services and utilities. Um, you can actually participate in the setting or adjusting of the amount of the assessment, tax, fee, or utility rate, so long as such charges are applied equally, proportionally, or by the same percentage to the official as all others. Um, another uh, exception is neighborhood effects. So this is sort of like a citywide effect, but on a smaller level. So the official may participate in certain decisions with neighborhood effects if the decision, if the decision affects more than 50 properties or at least 5% of the residential properties in the city in an indistinguishable way. Um, next uh, exception is for rental properties. So if you own rental properties or you lease rental properties, um, you can still participate in the decision if it applies to all residential properties and the official owns three or fewer rental interests, or rental units, and the interests affected are that of the official as either a landlord or a tenant. Um, so let's say that you do have a conflict of interest. What do you do from that point? Well, if it happens to be disqualified, uh, you would need to publicly identify the applicable interest. Um, specifically identify, excuse me. Uh, you need to recuse yourself from the proceedings and step down from the dais and leave the room. Uh, this includes virtual spaces, so um, you would also need to refrain from any discussion and particip- or participation. However, you know, you are a member of the public. You do have rights to speak on things that affect you. So you can actually participate as a member of public uh, from the audience. Um, unfortunately, yes, you probably have to fill out a public comment card and go through all the procedures. Um, but you are able to participate as a member of the general public. And um, we're gonna briefly touch on laws against bribery. Uh, it's a crime for public officials to ask for, receive, or agree to receive a benefit in exchange for one of the more official actions. Um, the notion of receiving a bribe can include things like campaign contributions, jobs, gifts, and special considerations not available to others. Um, this includes severe penalties, which can include prison time, disqualification from holding office, fines, and repaying the value of whatever benefit was received. Um, also, you, you'll probably have to pay some attorney's fees and, you know, generally won't look good. You, you may be sort of embarrassed about um, being caught. Um, so that concludes our brief overview of the Brown Act. Um, as I previously mentioned, any specific questions with regards to uh, personal matters or, or anything that directly relates to you, um, I would suggest approaching us outside of this meeting, but if there are any general questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Perfect. So next item on our agenda um, will be the Planning Commission reorganization.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before we begin, I just wanted to um, on behalf of our team, uh, acknowledge your leadership over the last year, and we put together a little swag bag.
Oh.
So we got you some cool stuff in there, a nice bag.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, enjoy, and thank you. So, yeah, moving forward, yeah, and thank you for it. So pursuant to the Monobello Municipal Code, specifically Section 2.40.030, um, the, with the Planning Commission is to select a chair um, from among its appointed members uh, for a term of one year. Uh, and this is subject to other provisions of the municipal code we won't get into at this time, and you could talk to Austin um, after his great presentation. Um, so with that said, it has been the tradition of the commission to follow the um, the council. So for example, i- if the mayor is uh, the person that appointed the commissioner, um, they would be sort of first in line uh, for the chair position. Um, I believe it's subject to nomination. So the nomination would take place if the commissioner accepts or rejects. Um, then we would just move on to sort of the dip- uh, democratic process as we did before. I believe we sort of took things out of order the last time around. Um, so with that said, um, I believe there would be, it's appropriate to take a nomination. Um, and Commissioner Lomelli would be um, the mayor's appointee. So I just wanted to um, go ahead and see if there was a nomination.
So you stated that it, it um, it is proper to follow, um, but I can go ahead and nominate somebody else. Shall we choose to go the democratic way?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, just because I have uh, had the pleasure of already being a chairperson, I do um, wish to actually nominate um, Armando Medina, given that he has not had a chance to serve as our chairperson. Um, so that would be my nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so with that said, we have a nomination, and I believe we need a second.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all right, and if we could take a roll call.
Yes, um, Chairperson Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lomelli?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and I think, congratulations. And I, I think it would be appropriate to open up and if you, if you, if the commission wanted to um, congratulate or, or thank um, Chairperson Morales, outgoing chairperson, and congratulate incoming Chair Medina. This would be the time.
Absolutely. Well, first and uh, foremost, I just want to thank uh, the entire team. It's, you know, it's been a great opportunity, starting as a commissioner uh, and um, being able to contribute uh, in, in the city of Monobello, in my own city and um, and see the changes as well. Uh, and definitely, I know that um, well, uh, Chairperson Medina will also contribute uh, for the benefit of our city and to continue growing. So thank you all. And congratulations, yes.
I, I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to the chair, current chair. Chair uh, for your leadership. I think it's been um, you know, a, a great uh, it's been a good seeing you grow in, in the position and taking lead into a list committee. Um, I think you leave very big shoes to fill, so I hope that I can reach to that level.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Wonderful. Great.
So we'll go ahead and um, do the exchange and then hand the gavel over to Chairperson Medina. And uh, it would be appropriate to um, also entertain a nomination for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I would like, I may not be coming back next time. So I think it's probably appropriate for me to uh, nominate Commissioner Lomelli. You know, it was a gracious um, opportunity and chance to, you know, um, allow Commissioner Medina to take on that role as a chair. So that was very gracious of you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um, I think it's a good decision.
Yeah.
I fully support it, but I also like to thank, you know, Commissioner Morales for her leadership. Thank you.
Sure.
But at this time, I would like to make a motion for Commissioner Lomelli to be the Vice Chair of the Commission.
We have a nomination, it's been accepted?
The nomination is accepted.
All right, so we will take a roll call.
Of course. Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lomelli?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will turn it back over to Chairperson Medina. Thank you. We are on council orals.
I'm sorry, where, where?
Uh, Planning Commission.
Oh, are there any Planning Commission orals?
I would just like to also uh, thank Commissioner um, Morales for your service. Uh, you have been a great uh, chairperson, and uh, you're, I really appreciate um, your commitment and your leadership here in the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much.
And very excited to see um, Armando Medina um, grow in his uh, seat as a chairperson as well. Thank you.
And if I may, thank you. Um, well, as I stated, I may not be coming back next time. Uh, we'll see what happens next, but I would just want to thank, you know, all the, my fellow commissioners for giving me an opportunity to serve with you. You know, everyone on this commission has been, you know, so professional, so good about the, you know, attending uh, the commission meetings, which is important. Um, your role and responsibility as a commissioner in our city, you know, has huge implications to our city. Great financial benefit, not just to the city, but also to the applicants that come before us. So we appreciate, I appreciate that you take that responsibility and the role seriously, so thank you. Um, I've served on this commission, this, this, I think this is my second time, maybe third time. But every, every time, you know, um, it's a new experience, and seeing different people serve, you know, is, has been great. So this, this commission has, you know, been one of the most involved, you know, most well-prepared. You'd be surprised how some people don't prepare, so you have all been well-prepared. So it shows and it reflects, you know, in the questions that you ask and, you know, the decisions that you make, so thank you. As my community as well, again, whether I come back or not, so thank you. But also to um, the director, thank you for your leadership. And, you know, to the staff that you bring, you know, to assist us with, you know, the preparation of the agendas and, and the files that you take in and the, you know, the cases that we take on. So thank you for always being so prepared, you know, diligently reminding us to be here, because if it wasn't for you, honestly, I'd probably forget, so thank you. Um, our attorney, Austin, um, I think this is the first time that I met you in my role as a commissioner. It's been a great experience. I'm, I'm already saying goodbye. I don't know if I come back, if I come back, it's like, but uh, you know, just want to say thank you for everything. Great experience, again, every single time, it feels like a new experience, so thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Well, I won't take that as a goodbye. I'll take that as uh, your planning your future endeavors. Who knows, maybe we'll see you in, in different uh, leadership roles in the state.
No, thank you. Maybe not.
Okay, well, I guess we'll move on to our adjournment of the meeting.
Yes, we'll call this meeting adjourned.